Our pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and see the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce our mayor, Mayor Blackwell.
Madam Chair, I think that the clerk would prefer that the mayor go ahead and handle his portion before the roll is called, so further ado.
I'm Mayor Nathan Blackwell, my address is 3824 Marriott Avenue. I just wanted to come and thank all of the members of the planning committee for your commitment of time and energy and intellect into helping to serve our city. And we have just a small token of our appreciation that Leslie will pass out to you now. We want to thank you so much for serving faithfully. And Rosa, I believe this is your last day. And is there anyone else like that, this is your last day?
No, thank you.
I know you've served faithfully for a long time, and we appreciate all that you've done, and we appreciate all of you. And so Leslie will pass out a gift to you on behalf of the city, and it's our appreciation, our thanks, just a small token for the commitment of time and energy that you've committed. Thank you so much for what you do and for helping with your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, how cute.
Is this your last day? Did he say last day today?
Six years.
There you are, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Jesse, for everything you do for us, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Jesse.
Oh, what a nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How cute.
No, but thank you. I see it. Green, lots of money. Look. My pen. Huh?
Do they have our name like that?
No, no, this is my pen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chair, you ready for a roll call?
Can we have roll call, please?
All right, and I also want to inform anyone in the public that wishes to address any item on the agenda to please provide a copy of one of these forms here, and there's some in the back. And you can also get one here, and you just fill this out. And when you approach the podium here, if you could just state your name and address for the record. Chair Holloway?
Here.
Vice Chair Oquendo?
Here.
Member Rivera?
Here.
Member Carney?
Present.
Member Grigsby?
Present.
Member Wolfher?
Present.
Member Landry?
Here.
And we have a call.
You have a call, Ms.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? If so, do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I second it.
Okay, second. Mr. Landry has the second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda would be ordinance number 202207. Pinnacle Park Comprehensive Plan Amendment, DRC case number CPA 21-00024.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you please read the second case into the record? I will be presenting them concurrently.
It would be ordinance number 2022-08, Pinnacle Park Zoning Map Amendment, DRC case ZMA 21-00012.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Tisha Manning, Associate Planner in Community Development. The case that I'm presenting before you tonight is going to be a comprehensive plan amendment for Pine Lake Park. The property is, the property consists of approximately 4.84 acres and is generally located east of Old Canoe Creek Road and south of Mesa Verde. Okay. The proposed future land use is private institutional with the proposed zoning, proposed zoning as professional. The current zoning right now is RE, single-family dwelling. And these, the proposed land uses and current zoning are not compatible with the surrounding area, however, they pose no adverse impacts on city facilities.
Okay, thank you.
This request does meet the strategic plan goals of growth management. In honor before October 15th of 2021, DRC and staff did review this case, and we recommend denial. Likewise, it is requested that the Planning Commission recommend denial of ordinance 2022-07 based upon the 16 findings of the Land Development Code.
Okay, thank you. Is the app, are you done?
Yep. The applicant is available, yes.
Yeah, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to step forward, please?
Good evening. James Mannion, 2728 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida. First and foremost, I think I'd like to change the name because I don't think anybody knows how to pronounce it. So we would like to change the name to Pine Lake Professional Offices. You know, give a little background on this. We came several years ago, met with the city about different potential uses. The city is actually the one that recommended to us to go for professional offices, and it's been a fight that we've been going through for a couple of years now. I know that there's a lot of neighbors in the audience that are strictly against any development, and while I understand that, I don't think it's realistic. You know, I've had several communications with multiple neighbors, both meetings at my office, Mr. Bob Stein, I've had emails going back and forth with him. And while I don't think we have anything that makes everybody happy, I think we can come to some level of a resolution. I've agreed to, you know, I've agreed with Bob that we would like to set some conditions on our application. We would like to extend a 50-foot buffer, natural landscape buffer, along Mesa Verde and Lake Trudy, the property that borders those portions. That would be a natural landscape buffer, no improvements, no additional landscaping. All the current landscaping would remain. You know, this would save somewhat in the vicinity of 80 oak trees that are already there. It would create a nice natural buffer between the two properties and the uses. You know, we would also have, you know, a fence between the properties as well that would be neutral in color on top of a berm. So we'd really limit the visibility of any of the commercial from the residential. We're trying to do a product that is going to blend in with the area. It's going to be more residential in nature. You know, and so this is, this is just to give you an idea of what we would propose. You know, we would have, you know, obviously sloped roof, asphalt shingles. You know, it would not be your more commercial-looking buildings, if you will, to give it more of a pleasant look with the adjacent neighborhood.
Madam Chair, if you could ask the applicant to possibly exhibit that onto some sort of an overhead so that the public can see that as well?
Could you do that?
You want me to turn it around?
Is there a way to display that for the?
That's above my pay grade.
Through our IT department, is there a way to display that?
I can turn it around and show everybody. I've got no problem doing that, you know.
That's going to, that's going to need to become part of the file.
Okay. I believe it's, it's part of your packet, I believe. Original submittal, we had sent this in.
So that's a blow up of what's already in the packet?
It should be. I believe it was emailed over.
I didn't see it in my copy.
You don't have that in your packet? Okay. I can email it over if not.
Well, it's going to, it's, it's going to have to become part of the file at the end of the presentation, sir.
You want to keep it?
The city will keep it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Just a little glare in it, but, okay.
Yep.
That'll work.
Okay.
You know, so I, going back to what we're saying, I think, I think the big thing here is having that natural landscape buffer of 50 feet. You know, the other options, you know, is to go with the residential development like you have in Pine Lake Estates now, or the property to the other side, which is zoned for multifamily. You know, either direction, you're either going to have two-story homes with, with a limited setback, no real landscape buffer, you know, or in two-story homes, or you're going to have, you know, three-story multifamily buildings. So while we understand the city's stance that the transition at this point isn't the most preferred, we do think that it's the best option available. And that the, the hours of the professional offices, the look of the professional offices, the landscape buffer, all of this would really help to make it fit in good with, with the immediate area. I know at one point there was a concern about retention, so we'll go ahead and mention that now. All of our watershed on the property will have to remain on the property. Obviously, this is just a zoning change at this point. And, and so we will have full civil plans both submitted to the city, the county, and South Florida Water Management District at that time. So the, there will be no watershed coming from this development onto the neighboring properties, I guess is what I'm saying. I think that's about it for right this second. You know, does anybody have any questions?
What will be the hours?
You know, typical office hours, there's nine to five, you know, maybe eight to five somewhere in that vicinity. I mean, that's, that's pretty standard. You know, I mean, our, our appeal would be, you know, medical, professional offices. So you'll probably have maybe some insurance offices, real estate offices in mixed in as well, but primarily medical is, is what we would be appealing to.
Okay, I have a question. Last time you were in front of the board, I remember that, but I can't recall, was it for apartments or condos you were going for, or also for commercial?
For, for professional offices, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're not, and just to clarify, we're not looking to do any restaurants, we're not looking to do any retail. It is strictly professional offices is what we're trying to do. So medical offices, you know, real estate insurance, things of that nature, you know, that is the limit of our scope.
Was there no traffic impact done on it?
We have not, we have not done a traffic analysis yet, no, we have not. But that will be our next step, you know, past zoning. That would be something we would do prior to submitting civil engineer plans.
I have a question. There was mention of a gas line running through the property. Which direction and what location? Do you know where that is?
So, and this is in your packet. It is diagonal. So you can see that, I don't know if you can see the dash line running through here. So this gas line runs all throughout St. Cloud. There's numerous multiple, numerous new developments and existing developments that all surround this. Our limitations on this, this easement area is that we just can't put a building there. You can put parking lots on there, you can put landscaping on there, but we are restricted from putting a building on there, so.
Yeah, this gas line runs through Pine Lake Estates.
Yeah.
So this is, this is another markup that we don't have in our packet, I don't believe. Do you all have this in your packet? Sir, we're getting, anything that you're going to submit to the commission, it's going to have to be made visible for the, for the public, as well as the commission, and it's going to be incorporated into the city's file, so.
And I can email, that's conceptual in nature. You know, going back and, per my discussions via email with Mr. Stein, who's one of the neighbors, you know, that will have to be tweaked. And, and as a result of us doing a larger landscape buffer than is required, so.
We understand that, but still, since you showed it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah, yeah.
The reason I'm asking that question is because I'm trying to understand what the limitations would be for residential here and why it would be less appropriate than this, for instance.
So, so yeah, I mean, residential could go here. I mean, there's, there's no question about that. And to be honest, it would probably, if it was my house backing up to this area, I would rather have what I'm proposing now than residential. You know, because the residential will have a 20-foot, 5-foot setback, which would be the retention of the yard. It would be back-to-back houses, like you see all through the city. The reality is, though, we have houses going all over the city right now, but the support services is lacking, and it's falling behind. And we need more of these types of support services to keep up with the growth that you have in St. Cloud.
And more than likely would be apartments or condos that would go in there on that property.
Yes, yes, because that's what the neighboring property is zoned for.
Do we have any additional questions? Go ahead.
Is this, are these buildings going to be leased out, or is it individual ownership? And who is going to be responsible for maintaining those buildings?
So, and that's a good question, that we haven't gone down that road yet. I mean, ideally, we would rent them out. You know, there is a chance that they could go condos in which there would be an association that would manage the, the premises itself, the parking lot, and what have you. But at this point in time, they would, they would just be leased out.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, okay.
Do you have anybody?
Madam Chair, if I could, just to clarify, Ms. Manning had made the point in her opening for the, opening of the cases, she was presenting both the Agenda Item A and Agenda Item B as a, as a composite, if you will, presentation from the city's perspective. Just want to get confirmation from Mr. Manning, your presentation speaks to both items as well simultaneously.
Correct.
So once we start to take public comment, I want it to be understood that both cases are being heard in conjunction. The commission will operate on each of them separately when it's time to come to a decision.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to the audience portion. Everybody that would like to speak has turned in the green slip, right? We have one more.
Madam Chair, you can, you can call them one by one and work through.
Yes, first person I would have here is Cory Church. Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Cory Church. I live at 4725 Mesa Verde Drive in St. Cloud, and my home is right behind building number nine that is being proposed.
Okay.
First of all, as Mr. Phillip asked about the gas line, which runs diagonally behind that property. And I understand, okay, you can have a parking lot over it, but again, I have not seen it on the photo as of yet. But it appears that, that pipeline would go under one of the buildings, I think. Again, I haven't seen the picture there as of yet.
These are not the final.
Results, yes, yes, ma'am. I'm resistant to the idea of having commercial property behind me. I'm more, you know, looking for residential homes, not so much condos and three stories, but regular family homes. The home that I'm in, my dad purchased back in 81. So I've been living there for the last 13 years, and I don't know if, I know I recognize some of you, but you don't know who I am because I used to take care of your telephones and data systems here a few years ago.
That's where I recognize that face, okay.
So yes, I do know what's going on in my community. But as I stated, I'm resistant to the idea. I'm not saying absolute no. I'd like to see some more answers to the questions that have been presented here at this time, and we'll go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we continue with the public comment and feedback, it was presented to me that, or suggested to me that Ms. Manning may want to address the commission as to the zoning piece. It was my understanding she had presented the city's presentation on both matters simultaneously. So we need clarification from Ms. Manning on that. If there is going to be presentation on the second piece, that Mr. Manning then have time to respond before we open up the public comment because the case is being presented simultaneously.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Yeah, so I did present earlier the piece for the comprehensive plan amendment. So what I'm going to present now is the zoning map amendment. Okay, so before you is the zoning map amendment for Pine Lake Park. It's about 4.4 acres, and it's generally located east of Old Canoe Creek Road, south of Mesa Verde. And we also recommend denial on the zoning map amendment.
What's the zoning on the property right now?
Okay. The current zoning on this property is RE, single-family dwelling, and it's low-density residential as to future land use. The proposed future land use is private institutional with professional as the proposed zoning. As stated earlier, it does not have any adverse impacts on city facilities, however, it is not compatible with the surrounding area. It does meet the strategic plan goal of growth management. And staff reviewed this request in honor before October 15th, and we do recommend denial, and we ask that the Planning Commission likewise recommend denial of ordinance 2022-08 based upon the 16 findings.
Okay, thank you.
And you already know that the applicant is here for your questions as well.
Thank you. Mr. Church, would you like to add something since she spoke?
Sir, you'd have to come to the, to the podium.
I understand, you know, St. Cloud wants.
You got to state your name again.
Okay. Cory Church, 4725 Mesa Verde Drive.
Thank you.
I understand that St. Cloud wants to keep up with being modernized and what have you. The only other thing I have to mention at this time is there are lots of rental space in St. Cloud that is not being used at this time.
A commercial rental, you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So again, that's just something else I question as I'm putting in some more commercial buildings to be rented out, which is okay, I understand. But again, there's a lot of space out there that is there right now that's not being used. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to confirm that Mr. Manning wants to now make any further address in response to the city's presentation on the zoning piece, or whether he's made his presentation. That's fine, you'll have, you'll have time to come back. That's fine. Okay, thank you. Then you can continue on with the public comment. Thank you very much, sorry for the.
Eric Buckman?
Hi, my name is Eric Buckman. Live on 4731 Lake Trudy Drive. I'm going to attempt to keep this a little more concise. I think I want to kind of preface this by saying I recognize that since it's his property, he has every right to develop it as he sees fit. However, the thing I want to address is maybe that this is symptomatic of something larger at work in St. Cloud, and I understand that there's several layers of government machinery, if you will, concerning, you know, the state, the county, and the city, and that the city doesn't necessarily have the capa, you know, in terms of jurisdiction, some of these things fall outside of the city's purview. With that said, I think that the symptom I want to address is the overdevelopment of the city. I've talked to several people who have lived here for their whole lives, who have families going back several generations, and the rapid development of the city, I think, is taking away what makes the city unique, and that's its nature. By overdeveloping, I use that word because every time I drive anymore, I see large swaths of landscapes going up for residential areas or other things, and I think it takes away what's unique about our city. It, it just makes it more like the greater Orlando area. And I know for a lot of people, we don't necessarily want to be a part of the greater Orlando area of more people, more traffic, and less green spaces. So if it's possible, I would recommend that the, whoever is in charge of these things try to reserve green spaces in the future to keep St. Cloud, what makes St. Cloud unique. With that said, I think with, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. James. With what James said, I think I like his overall idea because it's a nice compromise. The reservation of green space is better than we would have gotten otherwise. Like 50 feet is quite generous. He didn't have to do that. And as he said before, if it was turned into residential, that whole thing would just be moved down, and we'd just have housing. So I think it's the quote lesser of two evils, if you will, not that I think your plan is evil by any means, but I appreciate it. I, I think that's the overall piece that I wanted to say, is the recommendation to city reserve green spaces, and maybe in future coding, have more eco-friendly places like as laid out by the Dark Sky Association or something like that. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Sandy Buckman? Buckman? What? You know who you are.
Those people get it wrong. I'm Sandy Buckman, and I live at 4731 Lake Trudy Drive. And our property backs up. When we bought our home, we, we were so thrilled because it was just so gorgeous and so beautiful. And, and, and we had no idea that, that the land that would be developed behind our home. As my son said, I would like to see, the charm of St. Cloud is, is its nature preserving the trees. You've done some things right as far as, like where that Walmart and Sonic, I mean, there was, there was at least some, a swath of trees that you left, you know, and it, and it looks pretty. And, and I think we, we have to be very careful about preserving green spaces. I was initially completely against having the land rezoned because I, I didn't want to see, I didn't want to see apartments, I didn't want to see two-story buildings, I didn't want to see, I didn't want to see, you know, office buildings or anything else going up in that area because it's just so beautiful and there's so much wildlife there. However, I understand as well that he can, you know, that, that, that land can be built upon, and I would, I, I'm okay to a certain point because by giving that, us that extra feat that we can keep natural, it's providing green space and still keeping some of the charm of the area. We'll still be losing a lot of trees. There's one especially that I would love to keep that's huge and gorgeous and old and, and, and I, I really hate to see cut down, but, but it would allow us to keep more of the trees and more of what we, we moved here for, and, and more of what the charm of the city is. And I think we have to be very careful in development that we, we do keep those green spaces because that's, we, we don't want to become a greater Orlando. spaces because that's, we, we don't wanna become a greater Orlando. I mean, we moved out of Orlando because we, Orlando. And, 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 and Saint Cloud has, still has an opportunity to preserve more green spaces. And, and, um, I'm okay with the fifty feet, I would love more, but I, I'm actually glad I will take fifty feet. Twenty-five feet I was not happy with. But, but the fifty feet and then leaving natural and then with a, with a neutral fence would be okay with me as long as the buildings stay one-story. And they were done professionally and, and that kind of look would be okay. I'm worried about the traffic, um, because Old Canoe Creek Road is getting very, starting to get very, very busy right now. And we still need an exit at that exit as well there. So, it's, um, I think we're, we're gonna have to be careful. But, but, um, that's, that's all I wanted to say, so.
Thank you so much. Uh, next person would be Robert Stein.
My name is Robert Stein. I live at forty-seven oh-seven Mesa Verde Drive in Saint Cloud, Florida, three four seven six nine. When I'm listening to the speakers, I always hate when they come up and they read a statement because it's just, I, it just doesn't sound natural. But I got so much to say, I'm gonna have to read in order for me just to get through it all without wandering off too far. And three minutes, that ain't gonna cut, but I've got two things here, so I actually get six minutes, right? Because I have two things I'm applying to, right?
We're not gonna time you right now.
Okay, we'll see how that goes. All right, when I and the neighbors that are boarding this property, purchased our homes, we trusted that our real estate agents knew what they were doing and were honest and were trustworthy. We all asked whether the wilderness view of our backyards would remain that way. Our real estate agents assured us that it would. Unfortunately, none of us thought to make them put that in writing. The applicant has shown some interest in cooperating with the bordering neighbors, coming up with a site plan that is at least offensive to us. He has promised that he would extend the twenty-five foot required by code, uh, buffer to be fifty-foot natural buffer. And I will tip off my hat to him for, for doing that because he, clearly wasn't required to. He's promised that he would use a neutral colored fence and use a, and forgive me for my pronunciation, Vibram hedge that he says within a year would cover the fence anyway. He's promised that there'd be no two-story buildings. He's promised to change the name of the property to Pine Lake Medical Offices. He's promised if I agreed to these things, that he would ask the planning commission and the city council to make their zoning approvals contingent upon these things. I was only able to agree with him in principle to these things as my previous dealings with real estate agents taught me to get it in writing. The applicant is only willing to put it in writing after he gets the zoning change. Then there's an issue with traffic. Because of the median strip that's in front of that property, every vehicle going there will need to make at least one U-turn, possibly two, on Old Canoe Creek. This will be problematic with any development on this property, residential or professional or commercial. The proposed doctor's offices will generate upwards of five hundred U-turns per weekday during business hours. The physicians, they schedule patients in ten-minute blocks or six patients an hour. Physicians typically see patients for seven hours a day out of an eight-and-a-half-hour shift or forty-two patients a day. The applicant has proposed up to eleven office buildings, which could generate a minimum of two-hundred-and-ninety-four patients coming and going daily. It is quite unusual for a physician to work without a partner, so that two-hundred-and-ninety-four is more likely to be five-hundred-and-eighty-eight patients a day, with each one of them required to make at least one U-turn on Old Canoe Creek Road.
I know.
Excuse me. Okay. The applicant has indicated that he would construct a left-hand turn lane to alleviate this issue, which I agree that that would take care of it. He said that the distances within the, are within the specs and that he didn't think Osceola County would object. Obviously, it would be in the best interest of the city, the neighborhood, and his business model to facilitate the traffic. The glitch is that he thinks it won't be an issue for the county, but he doesn't know that until he asks. And he won't ask until after he has the zoning change he wants. I think that the neighbors and the city deserve to know what it is that we're agreeing to in writing before or asked to agree to it.
Yeah, sir, there are several steps he still has to go through even if there, this was, was to pass this evening. Then he has to go through the city and then it has several more steps before it would be totally finalized. So, you have, uh, he has to have, I'm pretty sure, a traffic study done and site plan and, I, I mean, all kinds of things.
Okay, well, and, and that leads into my next thought, thank you. To my knowledge, zoning is the one and only opportunity that the public has and especially the bordering neighbors have to influence any development on the property. I purchased my home with, you know, a wilderness view and I didn't get it in writing, so I don't wanna make that same mistake again. So, I'm asking you to require a detailed site plan reflecting the things the applicant has promised, require a document or a letter from Osceola County giving the applicant permission to construct the left-hand turn lane, and require the applicant to construct the left-hand turn lane for traffic control and public safety before any zoning is done.
Okay. And the attorney can-
Madam Chair, if I could, just at this point, interject for the public. Plan Commission is here tonight to hear your feedback. They're an advisory committee, an advisory body, rec-, they're going to issue recommendations on the matters on tonight's agenda to the city council. These matters will then appear on a city council agenda and be heard at that time coming, and that these recommendations from the commission will be taken into account, but the issues will be readdressed by the city council. So, everyone should take that in mind. The commission will be acting tonight as an advisory body, making recommendations.
And, and can you, can you please also-
And the, the, this matters will be heard by, before council, do we know what date?
March tenth.
And the public is invited to all the meetings?
Absolutely. Do you have the date?
First reading is, uh, March the tenth and final reading is April fourteenth.
Okay.
If, if I may, one concern that I have a, as a homeowner here is if we agree to anything prior to knowing one-hundred percent guaranteed what it is that we're getting, we're basically forfeiting any right for, you know, civil, you know, compensation for, you know, loss of our view, for damage to our property, for any of that. And so, if we're gonna agree to something, we need to know what it is that we're getting. You know, like I said, I, I agreed to something and didn't have it in writing one time, not doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just again, a reminder for the public, the commission is here to take your feedback. The commission is not here to answer questions or give you guidance or direction, but is interested in hearing your comments and feedback with these matters.
Next person would be Melissa Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Melissa Kennedy. I live at seventeen oh-seven Pinion Circle, which is in Pine Lake Estates and it's right off of Mesa Verde. It's one of the cul-de-sacs. I have just a couple of really big concerns, which number one would be the traffic. Right now, all of you know, Old Canoe Creek, there is, when you're heading, I guess it would be south, um, there's a left turn onto Pine Lake Estates, which everybody uses as a cut-through now to get over to Seventeenth. And then you have to come down and do a U-turn if you wanna turn onto Mesa Verde, which is also being used as a cut-through now. The traffic on Old Canoe Creek with people doing the U-turns, it's very hard to gauge that. I have seen so many close, close calls with regard to accidents. If this is developed, or if it gets rezoned and it's developed into anything really, it's going to mean that when people pull back out of this, the only way that they can turn is right. And the very first street is Mesa Verde. And now Mesa Verde is gonna get flooded with even more traffic. And nobody stops on Mesa Verde, there's a corner stop sign at Mesa Verde and Lake Trudy. You can sit there any day and watch it happen. And then the next stop sign isn't until you get to the end of the road, which is Peachtree. So, I foresee a lot more traffic and there's a lot of kids, a lot of pets. I walk my dog twice a day. My son goes up and down Mesa Verde. My mother lives on the corner of Mesa Verde and Lake Trudy. So, it's just very scary for me, very, very scary. I'm also concerned that once this gets rezoned, it's free game. If, as long as it's rezoned, this can be resold again and do whatever they want with it. All they have to do is just get that rezoning in place. And of course, it's worth more money if it's zoned commercial or professional. I, I don't, I don't like the looks of it. Yes, the building is better than, uh, if it gets rezoned into multi-residential use. The original proposal was going to be either condos or townhomes, or it could have been three-story buildings, which has happened on the corner of Budinger and Seventeenth, which killed that corner property. I know those owners were probably holdouts, but their property value has probably gone right down the tubes. And I know there's so many empty office spaces around the, the county or the city as well. It's not like we're strictly against building anything there, but we'd like to keep it low-density. It fits with Pine Lake Estates. So, I think that's all. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. Frank Ostiglia?
Frank Ostiglia, four seven two four Pine Lake Drive. I've been a resident there for thirty-five years, so I'm very familiar with the layout of Pine Lake Estates. I'd just like to inform the commission that this particular lot, uh, lot, to the best of my knowledge, lies within the original plot plan of Pine Lake Estates. So, you wouldn't be developing, uh, outside of Pine Lake Estates or adjacent to Pine Lake Estates. You would be putting this type of development within Pine Lake Estates, within the subdivision. To set that precedent, uh, would, would do enormous harm to not only our subdivision, but every subdivision, a residential subdivision in the city. That's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you so much. We have one more person, Donna, uh, Dana? You? Say your name and address, please.
My name is Dana Howger and I live at forty-seven hundred Mesa Verde Drive. And I guess my biggest concerns is the traffic, really. Old Canoe Creek, um, road has really increased. It's almost difficult getting out onto it, let alone, and then if they put in this development, that's just gonna bring more traffic. We quit, uh, going down there. When we come home, we used to go do the U-turn, but it got too dangerous because there's so much traffic on there. So, now we come in off of Neptune Road. But my, um, so that's the big concern for us. And, um, I was wondering, then is that the only way in and out of this proposal, proposed, uh, development is on and off of Old Canoe Creek?
It's a five-acre track and yes, that's the only road front edge.
Yeah, the applicant can speak to some of these questions, or the commission's not here to answer those questions.
Okay. But that is a big concern, too, is when they come out of there, they do a right and like, um, they, uh, were saying that our, the first street is Mesa Verde. We don't have a huge lot of traffic down there, but that could bring in a lot more down our street. I do like the idea, if there is development there, that it's single-story, not multi-story. That was a big concern, if there are apartments or something going in there. So, I gue-, I guess that's the two biggest things for me.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak or against this request? If we don't have anybody else, I would like to close this audience.
Madam Chair, I think you should give the applicant a little time if he wishes to address some of the concerns before closing the public meeting, because you would allow him some time.
James Mangon, twenty-seven twenty-eight Thirteenth Street, Saint Cloud, Florida. One of the first things, we wanna restrict under this proposal, all buildings to one-story. You know, we're not doing any, uh, multi-story buildings. On the flip side, if it were to go residential or multifamily, the chances are you would have two-story buildings if it was residential or three-story buildings if it went multifamily. With regards to the gas pipes, the, the, the concept plan there does not have any of the gas lines, uh, running underneath the buildings, nor will we be permitted to or will we do that. So, uh, no buildings will be on top of gas lines. With respect to the wilderness view, you know, I mean, it, it's sad to say that, that you were misled at that time, um, but the property is private property, um, you know, and, and, you know, it will be developed at some point, one way or another. About the rental space availability in Saint Cloud, I can tell you, uh, there's not rental space availability in Saint Cloud. The, the properties that are being referenced foremost are properties that are in shell condition, uh, that are not ready to move in. When a property is ready to move in, they fill up like this. You know, I've, I've had a lot of space in town over the years. I've got a lot of friends that have space in town and I get calls, probably twenty calls a day, and there is nothing to put people in. So, there is a, a huge lack of rental space, especially in the professional office and medical offices. Lastly, a- about the traffic, a, and, and the reason why I, I couldn't commit to that with Mr. Stein with respect to the left turn lane is that obviously this is the zoning amendment that we're working on. And until this is in place, you know, we can't spend the money on the engineers to really dig in to, uh, the, the traffic reports and designing it. It's our intent to do a left turn lane, um, but until we get down that road, we, we won't know the, one hundred percent that, that it's even feasible. We believe it is, but we, we don't, we don't know to a hundred percent. And then just lastly, I think, just to restate, I think that fifty-foot natural landscape buffer is really gonna make the difference between this project and the other two options. You know, between that and the single-story buildings, you know, I think this is probably the, the, the best option, um, that's gonna preserve their privacy, um, a- and, and at the same time allow development. So, that's pretty much all I, I have, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that, uh, after a property owner spoke, that would like to make another comment? Say your name.
Billy Rocker, six one two eight Waterfield Way. So, I hadn't really thought about it, but I was hearing James mention fifty feet. Most of the subdivisions y'all are proven are forty-foot, fifty-foot.
Did you give your address?
Uh, sixty-one twenty-eight Waterfield Way. But most of the subdivisions y'all approve are forty or fifty feet and they got like a five-foot setback from the neighbor. And when you're, those are mature trees. So, when you think, you picture trying to look through fifty-foot of trees, they won't, nobody will ever see the buildings. I hadn't thought about that until I was just sitting there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Um, Mr. Rocker, if I can have you complete, I wanted these.
Step forward, please. Say your name and address.
Robert Stein, forty-seven oh-seven Mesa Verde Drive, Saint Cloud, Florida. It was going through the back of my brain, something that the attorney said, and I, which made me think that perhaps I wasn't really very clear, when I said that this was the only, um, opportunity that the public or the homeowners had to have any influence. I, I meant zoning, not this meeting in particular, I meant zoning in, 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 in general. And so, I said, I, I really appreciate the, the work that, you know, James has been willing to, to give up on. And I, I, I think he understands and appreciates our reluctance to giving up without really knowing what we're getting, what we're getting. If I had a detailed site plan, if I- If I had a detailed site plan, if I had something from the county, that would be a totally different story. Particularly with the, with the letter from the county, is the traffic, if the traffic cannot be handled, the land shouldn't be developed at all, as we were told it wouldn't be. So that is all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Gentleman Beck in the back. Say your name again and.
Francis Digglio, Francis Digglio, 4724 Pine Lake Drive. I don't know what the gentleman from Bedford are talking about. The land, the plot there is already zoned, low-density RE, single-family. When they say the, they could build, or someone could build apartments there or whatever, or two-story, three-story buildings, I don't know where they're coming from on that. Like I said before, the, that lot is zoned that way for a reason, because it is within Pine Lake Estates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Sandy Buckman, 4731 Lake Trudy Drive. I just, I meant to say this earlier in my comments, is that I don't know if it would be possible, but if, if, if we could, as landowners, if this goes through, if they could actually, if he could actually deed that 50 feet to each property owner, so that there's never a question about having that natural barrier there. And Mr. Rocker was wrong. We could definitely see a two-story apartment building or something like that from our property, because it's not, not all the trees are close in, and we're going to lose some of our large trees that do provide, do provide, do provide that kind of coverage. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Just a very brief addendum. There are a couple different species I've seen in that woods, like woodpeckers and other things. I don't know if there, that needs to be addressed during construction.
They have to do studies like that before anything can be built.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Staff, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is this property actually still a part of the plat from Pine Lake Estates, or is it not?
We did not look into that. I can definitely look into that and get back to the board about that. Hold on.
There is the lady with the answers.
Hi. Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. I did look into that. It is not part of the plat. It is a separate plat. It appears that it's still a slick lot.
Yeah, I didn't think so. This was, yeah, okay, good. Well, we will close the audience portion. Do we have any other questions from staff?
I have a question for the staff.
Yes.
Number one, proposed change is contrary to the established land use pattern. The response to the applicant's response was, the proposed change is inconsistent with the surrounding land use pattern and proposed development for the area. So can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because we, it is on Old Canoe Creek Road, and there is, the immediately adjacent property is zoned as medium-density residential, but the one, or I'm sorry, the two properties just south of that are commercial. And then when you go north, you have some commercial there as well.
Okay, so the, right now, the future land use of that property is low-density residential. And that piece of property that you're seeing at the bottom, that is commercial, in between where those two properties are, there is a house. And that is, right now, that is still zoned medium-density residential. So it's not compatible with the surrounding area as far as the development.
Okay.
But somebody could come in and have the future land use changed, because this is almost five acres.
Correct.
And get a higher density.
Yes.
And put condos in there.
Correct. Someone else can come in and apply for rezoning as well, and get a higher density.
Because you already have condos just a little bit down the road.
Yes, the property directly south of that is medium-density residential.
Right, okay. Okay, very good. Anybody else have any questions? No, thank you very much. Well, we don't have any more questions. Do we have a motion? And with any motion, would you like to add some of the, like, the 50 feet and so forth?
Well, if I could, Madam Chair, before a motion is presented, keep in mind that the, take each of the agenda items one at a time with the ordinance number and the DRC case number. And then obviously, whatever motion one is making has to contemplate the consideration of the Land Development Code factors that are part of your package with each of these cases.
We'll take DRC case number CPA 21-00024 first. So do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to actually discuss a little bit with the board.
Okay.
I just want to mention that I actually do agree with the applicant in this scenario. And I want to mention that I do sympathize also with the homeowners in the area. But I do feel that this type of development is probably the best-case scenario. Because if, if this is not allowed, then you do run the risk of somebody else applying for multifamily, which, as they mentioned, could be three stories. Or even if it is, if it stays residential, it could be two-story residential housing. So the fact that the applicant has agreed to provide a 50-foot buffer, as well as a single-story versus multi-story, and the fact that it is sort of a buffer between the residential in Pine Lake Estates, and what we're seeing some more commercial on Old Canoe Creek Road, and as we're going to see more, moving towards the turnpike interchange, I do agree with the responses that the applicant has made to the staff. And so I just wanted to mention that to the rest of the board.
Yeah, and I think, from what the, the way the audience was talking, if it's done properly, they would not really object all that much to that.
I just, I still think traffic is an issue that is not really being addressed here. I mean, we all know the traffic on Canoe Creek. I think we have to take that into consideration here. There isn't a turn lane, there may not be a turn lane. I know, just by driving around, that Mesa Verde and Pine Lake are cut-throughs. I do think it's going to impact the residents on that street with people cutting through, so I think that's something to consider.
I agree with that as well. However, with that being said, anything you put here is going to impact the traffic.
Yeah.
And the question is, you know, would this particular development impact the traffic more than residential? Now, one good thing about this development is that it would be closed on nights and weekends.
Right.
And so that is a huge benefit, in the sense that the traffic theoretically is only going to be, you know, between the hours of nine to five, nine to six, something like that.
I mean, medical was mentioned, but there was also other industry partners mentioned, so it could be open weekends, it could be openly. I know my industry was mentioned, and I don't work, unfortunately, nine to five every day. So again, that's not a strict clear cut. It's only going to be open these hours, because we don't know who the tenants are, we don't know if they're going to be leased or owned, there's no traffic study.
But that will be done before final meeting, so there's lots of other meetings coming up with that. And if, if it would go condos, and you're figuring at least two cars, possibly three, per, per living unit, you have a lot more traffic.
And probably, what, 16 units, if it's a quarter acre?
No, it's five acres. It's almost five acres.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, each individual, single-family unit would likely be a quarter acre or.
Well, if it's in houses, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Do we have any other discussion? No? Do I have a motion on DRC case CPA 21-00024?
You know what? I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance number CPA 21-0024.
The ordinance number is 2022-07.
An ordinance number two, yes.
Yes, sir, okay.
With the remarks that the applicant has said that he will be offering 50-foot buffers, a single-story building, keep the landscaping with the large trees, and follow through with the study on the.
Traffic.
Traffic when it comes to that section.
How about that it's only going to be professional offices, not retail or, you know, anything other commercial, or restaurants?
I would prefer it to be professional offices.
The request is to, to private institutional. That's the request.
Okay.
So the, just to clarify, the, and the, is this in contemplation of the 16 Land Development Code factors, Mr. Quinell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just to understand, the motion that you're proposing to the commission and to the voting members would be to approve this comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to private institutional, with the conditions of the 50-foot buffer, the one-story limitation, the traffic study to be submitted, and the landscaping.
The large landscaping.
And the current landscaping.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion as presented.
Yes, sir.
So then, Madam Chair, that would call for a second.
Yeah, do we have a second?
And then you have an opportunity to discuss.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it has been seconded by Ms. Carney. There's an opportunity for the commission to now discuss the motion that's been seconded, or to take a vote. It's the pleasure of the commission.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Well, my question would be that staff, based on the 16 findings, did request denial or suggest denial, correct?
Yeah, the recommendation from the staff's report was that the 16 findings had not all been, that's correct.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so.
Did you guys?
We have, we have five voters, no, we have five voters.
Oh.
Ms. Holloway, yeah, we're, we have five voting members. So by show of hands, the votes in favor of the motion voted in favor of, okay, so that's a vote of four to one in favor of the motion. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Four to one.
Do we need any other discussion on the next one? Ordinance number 2022-08, DRC case ZMA 21-00012. If not, do I have a motion on that?
I'm going to motion for approval of ordinance number 2022-8.
Zero eight.
Zero eight. Based on 16 findings in the Land Development Code, since we're already going to be changing the first one, we might as well do it to professional.
Is that motion going to include the same conditions as prior, Mr. Quinell?
Yes, sir.
So can you reiterate those?
With the same conditions, which was the 50-foot buffers, the single-story buildings, the mature landscaping, and.
Office.
And the traffic studied on.
Traffic study.
And office is.
That was not part of the first. That was not part of the first.
Okay. Any other discussions? If not, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Now you can have discussion if you wish.
Discussions.
There is no way he can put church services in there on a Sunday to make that traffic even worse.
No, it would be only offices.
Okay.
It would only be professional.
Yes, professional offices.
Well, that is a profession, too.
But not office. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, again, it passes four to one.
Okay. These matters will be heard, the first reading on March 10th, and again on, before the city council, and then again, Madam Chair.
March 10th, first reading, second reading on April the 14th.
April the 14th, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Next one is ordinance number 2022-16, Evaluation and Appraisal Report Comprehensive Plan Amendment, DRC case CNU 21-00015.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dag Marie Segarra, Planning Manager, and I'll be presenting to you this evening the Evaluation and Appraisal Report that is a mandate by the state. In front of you, there is a request to approve ordinance number 2022-16 for the adoption of the city's evaluation and appraisal report, and proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan based on the findings of the year policy audit, evaluation and assessment of legislative changes for 2009 through 2020 in accordance with Section 163.319 Florida State statutes. This is a mandate by the state that every, every seven years, every municipality is required to do an evaluation of their comprehensive plan goals and objectives and policies. So this year is the turn for the City of St. Cloud to make that evaluation. A little bit of background, in January of 2000, January 25th of 2021, the City of St. Cloud complied with the mandates of the Department of Economic Opportunity and Evaluation and Appraisal by submitting a notification letter with the determination that amendments will be required to the comprehensive plan, and that we will be stressing any changes that are, were statutory and will be in statutory compliance. Through that process, the city hired the Services of Access Infrastructure, who conduct a policy audit and evaluation and assessment of all the legislative changes between the years of 2009 and 2020. And those, and the proposed amendments in front of you this, this evening, are based on the findings of that audit. The first amendment that is being proposed is to the housing, housing element of the comprehensive plan to update the definition, to update the definition of the affordable housing per the state statutes. This is just to comply with the, with the definitions that is currently on the state statutes. The second amendment is to the capital improvement elements, and this is to add language that will require the city to update their capital improvement plan every five years, in accordance to the city's budget every fifth year. And also, another change to that capital improvement element is to update language in that reference to mobility fees, since we no longer, the work on currency, we got to update and utilize the mobile, the language to mobility fee, to make sure that we preserve or reserve transportation cap, capital for project, future projects in the city. The next amendment is to the transportation element is to update language that refers to that mobility fee, indicating, and removing any mentions of the transportation impact fees, because we're no longer, we're now going to be adopting, or we already adopt the mobility fees. And in continuation with the transportation element, this is also to eliminate language that refers to transportation impact fees. And the last amendment is to the future land use element. This past year, legislation passed a new statute that will recognize existing or previously approved development orders, and it is, it mandates the cities and municipalities to, to approve and, and recognize those previously approved development orders. And we just added that language from the statute. This changes meet the strategic goals of the growth management and public service. And on, on February 11th. And on, on February 11, DRC staff made a recommendation of approval with no comments, and it is staff recommendation to this board to recommend to the city council to approve the adoption of, or the transmitter of ordinance 2022-16. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, there's a correction to the DRC case. It should be, it should read CPA 21-0006.
Not CNU, that's CPA.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
My version has it correct.
The memorandum, I think, has it correct. CPA 21-0006.
Yeah, on this sheet, it's wrong.
On the agenda itself.
Exactly, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for city staff, or possibly the city attorney. Is this in front of this board, simply because it's in the charter that it has to go in front of this board?
This is the part of the process, the commission will make the recommendation to council, and then the council will act upon it.
Do we have anybody in the audience for or against this? Is it pertaining to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, step forward.
Yeah, you can provide feedback, certainly, to the commission. Commission's not here to answer any questions or give direction, but they can certainly take your, you can speak to the city staff anytime you wish.
Of course.
We can meet afterwards.
Sure.
Of course.
Do we have any questions?
I just have one other question about the housing element, and the affordable housing, and changing the definition of that. Is that, that's to align with the state definition, the state of Florida?
That's correct.
Any other questions? If not.
Technically, ask for public comment, Madam Chair.
We already did.
No, you did, I apologize, okay, all right.
We're closing this section.
Okay, understood, thank you.
If we don't have any more questions, can I have a motion on DRC case CPA 21-00015, please?
Twenty-one.
And it's ordinance number 2022-16.
And the case number is the 00-6.
It's actually case number CPA 21-00006, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. According to the memorandum.
I guess that's on, I guess I'll have to go over here, okay. Yeah, it's CPA 21-00006.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve case number CPA 21-00006, the comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes, five to zero. The whole number was wrong then, on this sheet.
Yeah.
Yes, on the agenda, that was my fault, I apologize for that, my error.
That's okay, that's okay. This was the last item on the agenda, so, do we have a motion to close this meeting?
A motion to close the meeting and adjourn it?
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I think we all want to go home. Thank you very much.
Congratulations for six years of service.
Yep, absolutely, always good to work with you, obviously, Ms. Holloway, congratulations.